We're going to reconvene our council meeting at 7:08 PM. Council, if you will please sign in. All council members are present. Audience, if you could join me and troop 2797 in honoring our nation with our colors. Ladies, the floor is yours.
Girl Scouts attention, audience attention. Color guard advance. Color guard halt. Color guard post the colors. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in saying the Girl Scout promise. On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law. Please join me in saying the Girl Scout law. I will do my best to be honest and fair, friendly and helpful, considerate and caring, courageous and strong, and responsible for what I say and do, and to respect myself and others, respect authority, use resources wisely, make the world a better place, and be a sister to every Girl Scout. Color guard return to rank. Color guard about face. Color guard forward march. Color guard dismissed. Audience, please be seated.
That was fantastic ladies, way to go. Way to go.
The Boy Scouts got a lot to live up to.
I know, yeah. Next Boy Scout troop who's watching, they better set the bar, your ladies set the bar pretty high for them. Hey, and speaking of that, in case you guys were curious, and if you're not busy on a Thursday night, the second Thursday of each month, I have here at Town Hall at 4:00 PM for Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, anyone, we have Scouts Night here with the mayor. So it's an opportunity for anyone to come down. If you have questions you need to ask for your badge, just attend, anything, you can come down and do it. We have great discussions about the town of Parker, what goes on. And here's the bonus, if you email or call us before that night, you can obviously just show up if you want to show up, but if you call or email beforehand, you'll get also a certificate that you came and signed and all that. Now, you should probably RSVP because if no one else is coming, I might not show up and it'd be a bummer if you're just hanging out here, but it's a good way for you to come down to see how the town runs. So please, take advantage of it and spread the word. Alright, so with that, we're going to move on to our next item, and we've got special presentation as well for Girl Scouts Week in Parker, correct? Who's handling that?
You.
No, I guess I am.
I don't have anything in front of me, so. Alright, well, actually, how about I come down with you? Go handle it together, how's that sound?
Can we also get photos with the girls and our cool mayor?
Absolute, since you threw cool mayor. Alright, so what I'm going to do though is, before we get photos on, let me read for you a proclamation. It's no secret why we have all these great scouts here, and in fact, as a lot of you guys know in the audience, there's a lot of us have been scouts through our life, and there's some Girl Scouts in the room, Boy Scouts as well. Scouting is an incredible organization to help teach our kids the importance of them embracing their civic obligation to do something every day and make our world a better place. So ladies, I just want to say to you, before I read this, you have undertaken a huge responsibility by being a scout that makes everyone know that you have chosen to be a leader in your community. So, leader, good leaders aren't people who tell others what to do, good leaders are people who inspire others to do great things. So you've got a big job to do, and I know you all can do it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
What if we bring the scouts down while you read it, so livestream can see them?
Everyone on the livestream, hurry, come on down. Big smiles, it'll be on camera, millions of people are going to see you. Millions of citizens.
That's right.
Come on down ladies. Don't be shy, young ones. Alright, you guys ready?
Yeah.
I'm not very good at reading, so I might need to do it. Whereas, Julia Daisy Gordon Lowe founded the Girl Scouts of the USA on March 12th, 1912. And whereas, in 1917, the first Girl Scout Council west of the Mississippi was formed in Colorado Springs, known as the Wagon Wheel Council. And whereas, in Girl Scouts, girls develop their leadership potential through activities that enable them to discover their values, skills, and the world around them, as well as connect with others in a multicultural environment. And whereas, Girl Scouts continue to create gender-balanced leadership by providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making this country a better place. And whereas, the Girl Scouts has made girls' financial literacy a high priority in its programs and activities for more than 100 years, and continues to develop financial empowerment programs for girls in grades K through 12 to guarantee another future generation of independent female leaders. And whereas, the Girl Scout Cookie Program, my personal favorite, introduces girls to the concepts of business planning and entrepreneurship, and is the largest girl-led business, teaching girls the value of goal-setting, decision-making, money management, people skills, and business ethics. And whereas, Girl Scouts teaches girls how to build healthy relationships through anti-bullying and relational aggression programs. And whereas, the Girl Scouts is committed to ensuring every girl has the opportunity to explore and build an interest in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, helping them to develop critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills, and collaborative skills, which are vital throughout life. And whereas, in the state of Colorado, Girl Scouting reaches all 64 counties with Girl Scouts offices in Colorado Springs, Denver, Loveland, Grand Junction, and Cooplo, and mountain camp properties near Bailey, Estes Park, Red Feather Lakes, Rye, and Woodland Park. And whereas, through the dedication, time, and talent of 10,000 Colorado volunteers of different backgrounds, abilities, and areas of expertise, the Girl Scout program has brought to more than 22,000 girls in grades K through 12 across the state. And whereas, in 2017 in Colorado, more than 1,800 Girl Scouts helped make the world a better place and earned one of the Girl Scouts' highest honors, the Bronze Silver or Gold Award. And now, I don't say what as anymore. Therefore, I, Mike Wade, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Parker, do hereby applaud the commitment Girl Scouting has made to support the continued advancement of girls to their roles as leaders here in Parker, Colorado, and declare March 11th, 2018, or March 11th through the 17th, 2018 as Girl Scout Week in the town of Parker. Congratulations, girls. The way the girls are fixing to head out the wide-angle lenses. Get in tight, if you're taller, get in the back, if you're not as tall, then the girls behind you will make it. You don't just get, come up right. And then council behind you. Alright, no one usually. Maybe couples.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you guys very much. Alright, now we have another presentation. This is for the Town of Parker Explorers Program. Chief, are you going to be doing this for us?
Because the folks that are going to help out a little bit here, Mr. Mayor, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
So tonight, cadets, can you come on up? I kind of had them sit up here a little bit earlier, kind of show them what we're doing, but... So, Mr. Mayor and council, tonight we're here to recognize some of our cadets. And you talk about the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, as you know, and hopefully some of the folks in the audience, they may not know, but the Explorer Program is also a part of the Boy Scouts of America. So they're exploring this profession of law enforcement. It starts at the age of 14 if they want to join, to the age of 21, that can actually, at that point, join the police academy. But we have been fortunate to have a lot of great cadets over the year. We have many officers, a commander, and some other folks at the police department that are ex-Explorers, that have rose to ranks. So tonight, I'd like to have Danielle come up and read kind of proclamation like you did, but not as long.
Come on, she can try.
Yeah, so Danielle, she's one of our communications technicians, she's also an advisor, just like Officer Harris here and Sergeant Dagenhart, they're part of the program. So Danielle, why don't you come up and tell them what we're giving these folks tonight?
So tonight, we're going to recognize these six explorers for the time that they have dedicated to the law enforcement funerals, and actually a fire explorer funerals that have happened in the first two months of the year. Just these six alone put in over 103 hours. That would normally be covered by commissioned officers, so that commissioned officers could attend. As you guys are aware, some of those were adverse weather conditions, where we had blizzards, we had lots of snow, we had rain, we had cold. They stood out there the whole time, and the officers were able to attend the funerals. So, I'm just going to read the letter that's being presented to everybody. Says, "On behalf of the Parker Police Department and the town of Parker, please accept our appreciation for your time and efforts during this difficult time in our community. We want to make sure you know how much you are valued and appreciated. We know that the recent deaths of three Colorado law enforcement deputies and a fire explorer have been very demanding on resources through the law enforcement community, and without your time, dedication, and willingness to help with any task asked of you, these funerals to honor our fallen heroes would be difficult to complete. Thank you to your dedication to the Parker Police Department Explorer Post and your unselfishness to step up during adverse weather conditions to cover positions normally covered by our commissioned officers to allow our brothers and sisters in blue to attend these funeral services."
Congratulations.
So I will call each explorer up by name, and we'll go ahead and present you your award. First one will be Explorer Sergeant Lane Mast.
Wondering the same thing. So while they're coming up, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So I know we've got our explorers here, are these like detective explorers? They just didn't have the... Because it's an honest question, because what are detectives, because they wear suits.
Yeah, they are actually brand-new to our post. They have only been with us less than two months.
Alright.
So they actually stepped up right away and were able to assist with the funerals.
So I wasn't being mean or anything, I was just legitimately curious, since you weren't in uniform, if it was because you were like detectives.
Yeah, so they're still in that probationary period.
Alright, oh, alright, continue.
Sure. Lane walked away.
Yeah, I gotta take everybody's hand, lady.
He needs to learn how this works.
Explorer Skylar Van Meter?
Come stand up here after you get your certificate.
No matter what the chief says, come over here.
We'll do pictures afterwards.
Explorer Joseph Kretser? Explorer Elizabeth Mazzarella? Explorer Alex Wilson? And Explorer Brett Baker?
Fantastic, alright, congratulations guys. Squeeze in nice and tight, like you.
Maybe you can get somebody in the crowd, hey, put Maloney to work, he'll take a picture.
That phone has far too much technology.
Hey Jim, will you take, will you? Kevin, thank you.
That's Dr. Milan, please.
Oh yeah, sorry.
Thanks, great job guys, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks for all you do, guys. Alright. Next item up on our agenda is Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. I don't see Dennis unless he's hiding in the back over there, so alright. Next after that is our Downtown Business Alliance updates.
The mayor, I talked to Shelley, she is busy tonight, she is actually fundraising for the community, and she cannot be here tonight.
Okay, alright, then we'll move on to the next item, which is public comment. This is for general public comment, this is for items that are not on our agenda. If you're here for an item that's on our agenda, there'll be a public comment period for that, so this is just general public comment. There's a three-minute time limit, you'll see there's a clock above me. I've got one on the other side of the wall there too, in this cool magic box that I can control it with. And so, a three-minute time limit, no action will be taken on these items, it's just an opportunity to address council if there's anyone here to do that. So with that, I'll open up public comment at 7:23 PM.
Scouts.
Scouts, any good...
I'm just glad you're there.
They're like, oh, what good question can I ask? No?
You might get extra credit in class.
Kevin? Anything? Alright, we'll close public comment at 7:24 PM, and we'll move on to reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. Mr. Martin, how about we start with you today?
I would say, really the biggest thing, I had a couple meetings get rescheduled, but we had our town strategic planning session, they used to call them retreats, but you're not supposed to say that anymore, that's like a bad...
It's not as touch-feely.
Yeah. So that went well, I would say the majority of the time was spent on budgets and things like that, which is all sorts of fun, as folks, we typically approve the budget for the next year in October, but that starts well, well before that, so we work on it all year round. So I'd say that was probably the big piece.
Okay, Amy?
We had our schoolhouse grand reopening, and that was open to the public, just showcasing the renovations. And so I invite anyone, if you're out and about, to just stop by, walk through the schoolhouse there on Main Street, and just take a look and see some of the new exciting additions that we made to it. And hopefully, you can attend a show, or, you know, we have like jazz music, we have comedy and cocktails, all kinds of fun things going on, so please stop by and join us. Debbie I know did have an SCFD dinner that I attended with her as well, and I'll let her update everyone about that. I attended the chamber board meeting last week. We had Matt Carlson from our Economic and Development Department provide an update to the chamber members, and also Anthony Graves from the Denver mayor's office. Anthony is the Director of Regional Affairs for Denver, and he was speaking to the chamber board about a potential 2030 Winter Olympic bid that Denver is currently thinking about putting in. So it was interesting to see, they've already formed their committees, and so it was just very interesting to see what, you know, challenges that may occur if they truly do go forward with that bid. My biggest concern would be to maybe, you know, hopefully try and build some additional transportation along I-70 to help us all get up, or not just up to the mountains, but back home, safe. So, and then, I think that's about it for me.
Josh?
Thank you, I will again reiterate, the schoolhouse is fantastic. It was restored to the build quality or build footprint. There was a lot of additions in walls, and dividing of the spaces, and lowering of the ceilings. What they've done there is just, it's absolutely amazing, it did truly open it up. I'd like to actually have council meetings over there now. But no, it was a great space.
Do have a bar over there.
Big room, they actually have a footprint of the Pace Stage down in the basement, so they can do rehearsals down there. Just a really, 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 really cool job, really proud of it. And then second, last week, I did Douglas County Open Data Initiative. Seems to be our motivation lately is just to get as much information out there as we can in every possible way for the citizens to find it. So Douglas County as a whole, some of the things we've done locally is open budget on the website, also the active development map on the website, but the county's going through the same process, and what we're trying to do is link them all together, so you can go to one portal, and if you like, and you can find information about all the communities in Douglas County, about the county itself, about the different districts. I know Mike is there for fire representation, it's fabulous. It's just, it's a great opportunity for all the different districts and communities to come together and get the information out the easiest way possible to the citizens.
Awesome, Renee?
So in addition to what was already said, just attended the Parker Chamber Lunch Bunch at Chicken Shack. That's it for me.
Did you bring any for us?
Yeah. Debbie?
It was yummy.
To reiterate what Josh Martin said, all of council, and including the mayor, was, we were in attendance at the no longer appropriate word, a retreat with council meeting, and we did spend a great deal of time on my favorite thing, the budget. So that, it really was an informative day from 8:00 AM till 5:00 PM, especially the 8:00 AM part. Also, as Amy and Josh Rivera said, the schoolhouse renovation is absolutely amazing. If you saw it before, you just cannot believe what it looks like now. The historic part, the front part, that was the, really, the schoolhouse, was kept to, we had historical grants, so that has to be kept in historical perspective. The back half, that had been for many of us who've been here, was the main workings for the Methodist church before they moved to where their location is at Indian Pipe and Parker Road now. What has been done there is absolutely amazing. I cannot even say enough, the last time I was in there before, two Saturdays ago, there was nothing but dirt floors, everything had been pulled up and blown up, and just columns. It's amazing. The Historic Society has a component now on the west side, a room where the diorama is in display, and lots of articles, and I believe that some of those articles will be changed in and out, so it will be kind of an ongoing, something new. As Amy alluded to, I'm a county commissioner appointee to the Douglas County Cultural Council. We had an SCFD meeting downtown at the museum, in that Scientific and Cultural Facilities District, last Tuesday evening. Douglas County was more represented than the other, there are seven counties involved, and we had the most attendees there, it was very informative. On Tuesday, I attended the Douglas County Housing Partnership, and the biggest, we had a... Most of the meeting was taken up with a presentation from the Solterra Group, who, Solterra at Castle Rock, they're redoing their facility down there. And that, what they're changing from, some of the skill to the assisted, is going to be pretty amazing for what, if they can pull this off for the folks there in Castle Rock. And I think that's, I think that's all.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
John? John, if you say nothing after that, then...
We said everything.
I got a few things.
Alright.
So I attended the E-470 Board Retreat. E-470 still uses the word retreat, so I think it's still, still okay.
They're behind.
They are behind. This was my first meeting, I was just appointed. Previous to that, council member Martin was the Parker appointee for the last six, seven...
400 years?
400 years. At the retreat, we talked, we had a board visioning exercise for most of the first day. We talked about vehicle registration fees and their master plan. So, very enlightening day and a half, two days. And I attended two concerts at the Pace Center, Christopher Cross. Looking out, I probably see about five people in the audience who actually know who Christopher Cross is,
And none of the scouts have any idea.
None of the scouts, no. And most, a few of us, I think council member Rivera and council member Holland were at Los Lobos this past weekend. So great shows here, bringing national music to Parker, let's hope it continues.
Alright. In addition to the schoolhouse, which again, not to beat a dead horse, if you haven't been by there, you guys need to go by there, the renovation was incredible, it's really, really cool. I was asked by Elbert County to sit on a panel with them, actually today. Elbert County is engaged in a master planning process for all of Elbert County, and so as a neighboring stakeholder municipality representative of Parker, I got to sit on that. It was really interesting to see, especially because right now in the town of Parker, we have about 52,000 people who live in the town of Parker. And in Elbert County, in all of Elbert County, at Build Out, which means everything gets built, based on their current development plans, they'll have about that many people in all of Elbert County. So, interesting to see what they're going through now and be able to give input. Last but not least, I want to ask a favor, especially to the teenagers in the room. I see three, four, or five young men in that corner over there, all have very long, thick heads of hair. I look over here and I see all these beautiful young ladies, and they all have thick heads of hair. I see some adults in the room that maybe not, don't quite have thick heads of hair, but we can all still use you because on April 28th will be the sixth annual Shave the Mayor fundraiser for pediatric cancer, and we need your heads to shave, young men. And I think your parents would probably like it, young ladies, make sure you ask your parents before you commit to shaving your head. But in all reality, I started this event when I first got elected mayor six years ago because of a young man, I know his parents, and he was diagnosed with brain cancer. And then the year after that, another young man I know was diagnosed... And then the year after that, another young man I know was diagnosed with another cancer. We've been doing this for, this will be our sixth year, unfortunately, last year, one of those young men did pass away from his cancer after a long fight. So last year, we were honored to generate and raise about $82,000 with the help of a couple gentlemen in the back room, a couple of us shaved our heads, we had about 115 people shave their heads, including about 20 women and girls. In fact, the one young girl who's, I think, fourth grade, generated $22,000 in fundraising. So my point is this, we need your heads, I need 200 people to shave their heads with us this year. Please go to shavethemayor.com. Oh, and Mr. Fusa in the back, not only did he shave his head, but his beautiful wife shaved her head, too. And my understanding is she's already signed up to do it again, isn't she?
I think so.
All right, so now, there's no excuse, male, female, we like all the ads, come on down and get a shave. So go to shavethemayor.com to help out. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the next item, which is our Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine, will be enacted with one motion and one vote, unless a council member asks to have something removed for further discussion. So with that, council, I'll entertain further discussion or a motion on Consent Agenda Items 7A through 7K.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Amy and a second by Josh, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now, teens and scouts that are in the room, you might have looked up there and noticed that there was one person who didn't vote, the most handsome person up here. No, I'm just kidding, Josh voted. I didn't vote, and so you might ask, why? Do I hate Consent Agenda items? No, in the Town of Parker, the mayor by charter does not get a vote. The council members all do, so I don't get to vote, and that's why it's not up there. So it's important for you to know how your government runs like that. All right, next item up is item number eight, this is Public Hearings. Council, I will need a motion to continue item eight, A and B, which is service plans for Belford South and Belford North Metropolitan Districts to a date certain of March 19th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Renee and a second by Debbie, council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. What just happened for you guys looking, there was an item scheduled for our agenda tonight, a public hearing, and because of some reason, it could be not ready for it to be at hearing yet, maybe details hadn't come forth, or the packages weren't ready yet, the applicant has asked to have this moved to another date to have a public hearing later, so that's what just happened. But our next item, item number nine, is our ordinances, this is a public hearing for ordinance number 8.28.5 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to amend Chapter 4.03 of the Parker Municipal Code regarding sales and use tax concerning television and entertainment services. Mary Lou, are you going to, you're going to lead us tonight, aren't you? We need walk-on music for staff when he comes up.
I am, and I'm not even going to make you talk about the budget.
So, did our internet just go down?
No, I'm good.
Well, I got the paper, I'm the paper guy up here, so I got the paper, so.
All right.
You guys want to-
All right, I'll pull it up on something else if I can.
It's not that, it's this page, it's gone.
Yeah, there's no PDF.
I read it earlier, but the town request form is not here.
Yeah, it was there before.
All right, so that's a-
Neither's the ordinance.
We can work around that.
All right, yeah, we'll just move-
Shall I go to the-
No, no, we'll move around, go ahead.
All right. Tonight, what is before you to vote on is a change to amend Section 4.03.03 of the Parker Municipal Code, and the proposal is to delete the definition of television and entertainment services. Section 4.03.190 subsection A 7 of the Parker Municipal Code will be deleted. So from time to time, it's necessary for us to make minor modifications to ensure that we're getting the intended results of our local sales and use tax code. Most importantly, the changes that are in front of you tonight do not constitute a change in tax policy requiring voter approval under Tabor.
Okay, thank you very much. Mary Lou, council, do you have any questions? No? All right, since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:38 PM, if anyone would like to come forward on this item. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:38, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 8.28.5 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion from John and a second from Amy, council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before council, girls, you chose the perfect night to come to a council meeting, because we are adjourned at 7:38 PM. Have a good evening.